Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us this evening. My name is Caitlin DeBries. And I am with the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energies Environmental Support Division. And I'll be hosting the tonight's, tonight's meeting. I wanted to take care of a couple of housekeeping things before we get the meeting started here tonight. So first off, all lines are muted during this meeting, but we will be recording this meeting. And have it available for you, oh, probably in the next day or so. And you will get an email of the recording in case you want to re-listen to it again. So that housekeeping taken care of, I'm going to pass it over to Jennifer Dixon, who will be moderating tonight's event.
Thanks, Caitlin. Appreciate it. Hi, I'm Jennifer Dixon, and I also work over here at Eagle. And I want to go over a couple of things before we get into the information session tonight. So there's one thing about these virtual meetings that is a little bit tricky. So we want to make sure we talk about how things are going to work. So that everybody is kind of on the same page. So we have two sort of distinct portions of the night. The first portion of the night, we call our informational session. And what you're going to hear with that is a brief overview of the permit, the proposed permit, and some information from the inspector. And then that's going to be followed by a question and answer. So during that time, we'll be able to have some feedback with you, be able to answer your questions if you have any. And have a little bit of dialogue. And then the second part of the night is when your comment will be put on the record. Starts with a brief statement, opening the hearing. We take your comments and then we close the hearing. And so during that comment period, we don't answer any of the questions or anything like that. It's just to take those comments. So we've got those two sort of distinct portions of the evening. So I always want to talk about those, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. And I will go over it again when we get back to the hearing section, just so that we know what's going on. A couple of things that we should go over about how to ask your questions. So you can put questions in the question and answer box anytime you want to. So when you hear the permit engineer or the inspector talking about certain things, if a question pops into your head, go ahead and put that question in the question box if you want to. You can also wait till we get to that question and answer period. We'll have all of our panelists on and you can raise your hand using the click hand, using the click hand icon, clicking the hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And we do have at least one person that's calling in tonight. So if you're calling in and you want to ask a question, when we get to the question and answer portion, you're going to just dial pound, pound two on your phone, pound two. And that will kind of virtually raise your hand for me so that we can see that you have a question. We'll go ahead and unmute your line so you can ask your question verbally. So I'll remind you guys of this when we get to that section too, just in case you're not very familiar with how Zoom works. I want to make sure everybody's able to participate in the way that they would like to. So like I said, we'll go over that again at the end of the informational session. But the first thing I want to do here is introduce you all to our decision makers. So every time we have our proposed air permit that goes out for comment, we have a decision maker that reviews all of the information about the permit, all of the comments that we receive, and then makes a final decision. So Annette Switzer, if you would like to turn your camera on, and I know you want to welcome folks to the meeting. So go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thanks, Jen. We really appreciate you taking the time to meet with us tonight, to ask us questions and share your thoughts and comments about the proposed year permit. Like Jen said, I'm Annette Switzer, Air Quality Division Director, and I'm the decision maker for this permit action. As the decision maker, I'll be listening closely to the conversation tonight. So when the comment period closes, I can take the feedback and information that I've received tonight to thoroughly evaluate what direction the permit decision will take. Talking with community members is an important part of our permitting process. And the comments that you give us often lead to positive changes in permits. Tonight, you're going to hear from more of my staff about how we look at permit applications like the ones submitted by Indec. We'll talk about what types of comments we can and cannot use in our decisions on an air permit. We'll also talk to you about the draft permit and parts of it that may be of particular interest to you. We know this time of year can be busy for families, so I'll let you get back to the reason you've joined us tonight. I'll be listening in to the rest of the meeting and hearing, and I encourage you to ask questions and submit comments if you'd like to. Thank you again for all of you being here this evening with us. And Jennifer, I'll pass it back to you so we can continue on with the rest of the information we're planning to share tonight.
Yeah, thanks a lot, and I appreciate it. Now, we have a few other folks here that are going to be on our panel. I'm going to introduce them really quick. You'll meet them again at the end of the evening. But so if my panelists can turn your cameras on, and I know you already met Caitlin. But another person that you're going to be hearing a lot from this evening is Nicholas Carlson, or Nick. We usually call him Nick, and he's fine with that. So he's the permit engineer for this proposed permit. He's going to be doing most of the informational session that we're doing this evening. And then we also have Rachel Benaway with us, and she's the inspector for the facility. So she's going to be talking with everybody either during the question and answer. And she's going to be giving a little overview of what an inspector actually does, which is interesting sometimes. The other person that we have on with us is Brian Hughes, and he's our toxicology manager. And we also have Jim Haywood on, and he does our air modeling. So he'll talk a little bit more about air modeling if folks are interested about, like briefly. It's where we do predictive looks at what air emissions might do out in a community or around a facility that's being proposed, or when changes are being proposed. We look at kind of how those impacts are, and we do that with a computer model. So Jim does our computer modeling. And I think that is it today. I thought we had one other person on, but I think that they aren't staying on for the whole meeting, so I think they jumped off. Yeah, so all right, folks, if you guys want to turn your cameras off, except for Nick, I'm going to have you keep yours on, because I'm going to pass the baton over to you in just a couple of minutes. So again, just talking about how the evening is going to go. We're going to start with this information session, where I'm going to turn it over to Nick, where he's going to talk about the proposed permit. And then we'll get to that question and answer. So I will remind you how to ask those questions when we get there again. But just really quick, type them into the question and answer box when we get to that section. If you're calling in, that's pound two on your phone. Then we'll get to that public hearing. So remember, in that hearing portion, we won't have any dialogue with you. It'll be us just taking the comments on the record. We will talk to you about how you can submit an official comment, because tonight is not the only time that you have the opportunity to do that. In fact, we've already gotten some comments outside of this hearing. So you can email them, you can leave us a voicemail, you can send us a letter in the mail, and I'll let you know how to do that if you're not ready to make a comment tonight. We'll also talk to you about where you can find other information. So sometimes when we have these hearings, people are just hearing about it. Maybe they wanted to dig a little bit deeper into the information surrounding the proposed permit, the stuff that Nick's talking about, or even the stuff that Rachel will be talking about. So we'll let you know how you can find a little bit more information about that. And then we'll give you some details about how you can get ahold of us if you have future questions. So with that being said, Nick, if you'd like to go ahead and share over me, I know you're going to be in control of your part of the presentation. And then I'll let you go ahead and take it away whenever you're ready. The screen sharing part is always the most challenging part of the night, though. It really is. I don't know why. We're, we're getting, we should be really used to the platform, but it's always one of those things where it takes a second, and the platform likes to be a little tricky. So yeah, you're set. I see you, and you're ready to go whenever you want to.
So my name is Nick. I'm the lead permit engineer who worked with a team of air quality staff here at Eagle to review the Indec Niles air permit application. But before we get into the details of the project, I'd like to briefly talk to you about what the air quality division does and how our permitting process works. So air pollution comes from many different sources, including power plants, fuel burning vehicles, and various industrial sources. The overall mission of the AQD is to protect public health and the environment. And we provide this protection by using our authority under state and federal laws through the regulation of industrial sources. So air quality staff do a lot of different things. We monitor levels of air pollution. We look at air contaminants to make sure that the public is protected. We conduct inspections of regulated facilities like Indec. And we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants to ensure that the proposed operations are going to comply with the rules and regulations in place to protect public health. So the air quality division has the authority to permit sources of air pollutants. However, I'd like to point out a few items that the draft permit doesn't cover, and that we don't have the ability to regulate. So these include things like zoning, noise, and traffic on public roads. So if you have questions or concerns about these issues, you're going to want to talk to your local government about them. And additionally, the AQD doesn't determine whether a facility is needed when reviewing an air permit application. We evaluated a project to ensure that it meets the applicable air quality rules and regulations. So I'd like to give you a simple overview of the air permitting process so you can kind of see how we got from point A to point B. So first thing that happens is the company decides that they want to install, modify, or construct a source of air emissions. After that, they'll submit an air permit application to us. So once we receive that, it's then reviewed by an engineer like myself to review the information from the company to decide if their request can meet the state and federal air quality regulations. During the review, other air quality staff are involved to help with different parts of the review. This includes a review of toxic air contaminants, which you might hear later also referred to as TACs, and how emissions can impact the surrounding community. If these rules and regulations are met, then the engineer will create a draft permit. And then if public comments required, as in, as in this case, the draft permit is posted for the public to comment. Public comment is a very important part of the permitting process, which is why we're talking with you tonight. So once the comment period ends, we evaluate all of the submitted comments. The comments can lead to changes in the permit and the final decision. Finally, a decision is going to be made on that permit application. This decision could be either to approve the permit as written. It could be to approve the permit changes, or it could be to deny the permit. This decision is based on whether or not the company's application can meet air quality regulations. So now, before we get into what is being proposed with the current application, I want to give you a brief history of air permits related to the project. So Indec originally applied for a permit to construct a power plant at this location back in November of 2000. The final permit was issued in December of 2001 following the public comment period. In June of 2003, Indec proposed the same power plant but with revisions and a new application. The final permit this time was issued in April of 2004. It also followed a public comment period. Indec didn't act upon this permit either, thus that one was voided. Indec revisited the idea of putting a power plant in this location in May of 2016 with another application. This one also had a public comment period, and this included a hearing. The permit was issued in January of 2017 following the public comment period. Indec applied for a revision to the permit to reduce allowed NOx emissions. This permit was issued on June 26 of 2018. And then, since it was more restricted change, a public comment period was not held for that modification. The manufacturer changed the design of some of the equipment. So this process started again in 2019. And because the modifications would change the equipment that was originally permitted, the process included a public comment period and hearing. And this permit was issued on November 26, 2018. So Indec began the installation of this equipment in 2021. However, some of the equipment was smaller than what was permitted. As a result, Indec has submitted the application that we're talking about tonight to modify the current conditions. So this modification is to update the conditions to reflect the actual sizes of the equipment, along with lower emission limits for Index Combined Cycle Power Plant. So you might be wondering, what is a combined cycle power plant? Or how does a power plant like this work? So power plants consist of a lot of fuel burning equipment. In an Index case, this includes two natural gas-fired turbines with two heat recovery steam generators, which I'll just shorten to HERSIG. It also includes a boiler, fuel heaters, and an emergency engine. So to give you an idea as to how a combined cycle power plant works, I've included a graphic which gives you a general idea of how the turbine and HERSIG portion of the plant works. In this particular graphic, the HERSIG is labeled as a heat recovery boiler. The graphic shows how the natural gases burned in the turbine, and then the deduct burners, which are located in the HERSIG. The system allows Indec to use more of the gas energy, which means less gas is used to get the same amount of energy as a system that doesn't have a HERSIG. So now that we've discussed the permitting history and the permitted equipment, I'd like to talk about proposed changes. So when we include equipment in a permit, we account for the capacity or the size of the equipment. The equipment that was installed at the facility is actually half of the size of what was permitted. So this means that the potential emissions are going to be lower than what's currently permitted. Indec is proposing to include lower emission limits in the permit to reflect this. And I've got the table on this slide just to give you an idea as to how much smaller the equipment actually is, as well as the reduction in emissions for some of the pollutants related to the reductions. And for anybody who's joining us with a phone tonight, I can go into more detail on these later on in the Q and A if you've got any questions, or just want some more information on that. So now that we've gone over what the proposed changes are, I just want to go over what we look at when we consider the proposed project. So while we're viewing a proposed project, we look at a number of rules that will apply specifically to that project. So this will include things like any applicable state and federal rules that apply. This also includes, you know, evaluating the proposed emissions and impacts against those rules. Those evaluations can include checking calculations, verifying air modeling results, and reviewing control technology proposed. We also look at an air toxics review, which is something covered by our state rules that evaluates toxic air contaminants or TACs, like I mentioned earlier. And we also perform air modeling where applicable. So at the end of today, we wanted to know whether Index proposed project would meet these requirements. So when we're performing our review, we make sure to look at all contaminants that could be emitted to the air from the process and compare these against health-based screening levels. Michigan has health-based screening levels designed to protect against health issues like developing cancer or breathing problems. Potential air impacts based on computer modeling were compared to these screening levels. And our review of the proposed emissions determined that they would not violate these health-based screening levels. To ensure compliance, Index permit would need to include restrictions to ensure specific pollutants don't exceed their proposed emission rates. So now I just kind of want to get into, you know, a summary of the permit requirements and kind of give you an idea as to, you know, what's included in a permit. So a permit is a legally enforceable document with a list of requirements the company needs to comply with based on how the application was evaluated. So requirements in the permit are to ensure the project is operating as described in the application and ensures that it's operating in the same way that was reviewed by myself and the rest of the permitting team. The existing permit has requirements, including things like emission limits. These restrict the quantity of emissions from the process. There's also material limits, which restricts the type and quantity of materials used in the process. So for example, that would be, you know, a restriction for only using natural gas. We also have reporting, which includes notifications of the completion of testing or installation of equipment. We have operational restrictions. This dictates how the equipment should be operated. So in Index case, they are required to have a malfunction abatement plan. There's also a number of startup and shutdown requirement. And in addition to that, we also have testing requirements. So these lay out what emissions need to be tested. The test method that's going to be used to verify that, the frequency and timeframe of the test as well. In addition to that, we've got monitoring. So this includes parameters that the company needs to keep track of to make sure that the equipment is operating efficiently and safely. And then last but not least, we've got record-keeping conditions. These lay out the records that have to be kept to make sure that the permit requirements are being followed and met. So in order for Index proposed project to comply with the state and federal requirements, aspect of the current permit needed to be updated as part of the proposed draft conditions. So now that we've gone over what's included in the current permit, I want to just talk about the proposed draft permit. So the proposed draft permit has the following changes to index existing permit. So the proposed draft includes lower emission limits for the boiler and fuel heaters. It also includes lower size requirements to reflect the actual size of the equipment, as I had mentioned earlier. In addition, some of the monitoring conditions have been replaced by testing. So this means that instead of just, you know, keeping records and calculating emissions, they're going to show compliance through stack testing for the boiler and the turbine generator. And this allows for more accurate monitoring for emissions from this equipment. In addition, we also updated some of the applicable federal regulation references that are on the permit as well. And so now I'm going to turn it over to our district inspector, Rachel Benaway, to talk to you a bit about what she does and what she looks for.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Benaway. I am the inspector for Cass County, and I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to share with you what it is that I do for you. It's my responsibility to do inspections at the facility. I attend testing events, and I also handle complaint calls from Cass County residents. Indec is a major source of criteria pollutants, and that means that we target them for regular inspections. I have no idea when I'm going to show up. So that means they need to stay on their toes at all times. When I do an inspection, I evaluate odors, I look for fugitive emissions, I check for new, modified, or removed equipment. So kind of check to see if anything has changed since the last time I've been there. I look for signs that equipment is not working properly, especially pollution control equipment. I take readings from equipment. I look for fault lamps or alarms. I view things like inspection sheets, logbooks, maintenance records. I also do a thorough accounting of the records that they're required to keep by their permit.
I think we lost Rachel. I know she, they said that they're having some weather down there in Cass County where she is. We just started getting some here. I live a little bit close to Grand Rapids, so we hope that she'll get back on here. I know hopefully everybody that's listening in is being safe down there. But like she was saying, inspector's job really is to go in and ensure that the facility is complying with all the conditions in their permit. You know, that's probably the most important things that she does. And another thing I know she already mentioned is that these inspections are unannounced. We do not call the company and say that we are coming. We show up when we have to. So if you have any questions about the inspection process, and if we don't get Rachel back on, you know, we can, we can always answer some of them. Or if she doesn't get back on, we can have her respond back to folks individually. But another thing that we want to mention is, oh, there, she's back. Okay, good. I was filling in for you, Rachel. You okay down there?
That's okay. Yes, it just blinked out. I don't know. I don't even know when you stopped hearing me.
Okay, no, no worries.
Can you see me?
No, but it's okay. If you want to keep your camera off, just to kind of make sure that you are with us. We'd rather hear your voice and hear what you have to say. You know, it's great to look at you, but I think what you have to say is more important. But I was just going to, I was just getting ready to talk about emissions reporting. And so if you want to kind of take it from there, I think we'll be good to go.
Sure. So what I was saying was my, part of my normal inspections includes looking over records I have to keep. And, and those records do include emissions calculations. But basically, I make sure that they're complying with all of the permit conditions that Nick already, already talked about. So if a facility is not in compliance, violation notices are sent within 14 days of discovery. And then afterwards, I do a follow-up to make sure that the violations can be resolved. So it's not just a matter of, you know, issuing a piece of paper, and then that's that. It's an ongoing process to make sure that we get them back into compliance. It's also important to note that violation notices and the written activity report of my inspections, those are all public records. So they are posted online for you to view on our website. My contact information is listed in this presentation. I'm happy to discuss any concerns you might have regarding inspections at any time. But at this time, I'll pass it back to Jen for our question and answer period.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Rachel. I know the weather is getting a little bit crazy here as well. So Nick, I'm going to go ahead and just share over you right now. And as we move into the question and answer portion of the night, the one thing that I just wanted to go over again and mention is the just different parts of the night that we're having. I see that we already have a question coming in. I know Caitlin just went and shared the link to where you can find the information about Rachel's inspection reports and things like that. So that if you want to view those, you can. And I know we do have someone calling in. So if you need assistance in finding that information online, or if you can't find it online and you want it in a different way, please just let us know. We're happy to share that with you in whatever way we can. We do only put limited things on there right now, but we were hoping with a new system that we're implementing sometime in the next year or so, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed on that, that we'll be able to share more of that information. You know, one of the things that Rachel talked about was letting us know if you're having issues with the facility. I know one of the questions that we got in the chat was about noise, and we'll talk about that in a, in a couple of minutes. But there are certain things that Rachel can respond to. You know, we're talking about mostly things that are air quality-related, dust, odors, things like that, that you might be having issues with, with the facility. And hopefully you never do, and you don't have to give her a call. But if you do, you know, she's more than happy to help you out. So if I can have the rest of my panelists turn your cameras on, I want to make sure that we are going to write into our question and answer period here. So like I said, if folks have questions, please go ahead and pop those in the chat. If you are calling in and you have a question, just to remind you that raise your hand function is pound two. And then that will raise your hand for us, and we'll happy to help you verbalize. Or if you want to verbalize a question, that's fine as well. All right, so this question that we, that we received was about noise. So, and the question was related to the fact of is the city going to have to re-permit the facility to be able to operate in this other way? So I know in the beginning of Nick's conversation with folks, he was talking about some of the limitations that we have when it comes to commenting on these air permits. And noise is definitely one of them. Noise is one of the things that is handled completely by the municipalities. And so it's not something that we would have authority over. I don't know if the city would be required to re-permit the facility in a different way or not. And I know that folks have let us know that that is a really big problem with vibrations and noise and things like that. And we're happy to elevate that to the municipalities. I think Rachel could definitely let them know that we heard that comment here tonight as well. But it is not something that we can handle, unfortunately for you, or something that we can address through our permitting process or through our public comment process. So I'm going to give you guys just a few minutes to see if there's any other questions that folks might have for the panelists today. And if we don't get any of their questions, we're happy to move right into the public hearing portion of the night. I know sometimes it takes a second to think of what you want or to type it out. All right, so we do have someone raising their hand, so hold on one second here, and I will go ahead. All right, so person calling in with the last four numbers of nine, two, three, four. If you'd like to go ahead and ask your question, if you want to introduce yourself, that's fine. If you don't want to, that's fine as well. But go ahead whenever you're ready.
My question is, what is the state limits mandated on emissions? And how much lower will they be with the new permit than they are now?
Yes, sure. Yep, that's a great question. So Nick, I'm going to pass that over to you. But while we are watching here, for those that are not on the phone, I'm going to go back to that slide that had the, this one that I just passed, the one with the chart on it. So do you want to walk through some of those emissions changes and just talk about what the pollutants and just talk about what the pollutants are that we're talking about? And, and you know, when we talk about state mandate, you know, that's a little bit different. We look at these on a kind of permit by permit basis and what the, what is being proposed for the project. But in this case, we are having some significant reductions of emissions. So Nick, if you want to kind of walk through this table a little bit more, I think that'd be really helpful.
Absolutely. Um, so yeah, so like Jen said, it is, you know, kind of case by case, permit by permit. Not every permit's going to have the same pollutants. And so with what's changing with this permit, and this table, like, I included just some of the reductions, not necessarily all of them, just to give an idea. So I don't have all of them at my fingertips right now. But what I have in the table right now kind of shows like quite a bit of a reduction. So for like the boiler that's being installed, originally it's, you know, 182 million BTUs per hour. And, you know, the one that's, like, the actual size of it is only 85. So, you know, we're seeing reductions of like, like point seven six pounds per hour of particulate matter. So that may not sound like a lot, but like it definitely adds up over time because the standards for particulate matter are on, usually on like a tons per year basis for those thresholds, depending on which federal laws you're looking at. And so then for like the fuel heaters, those ones are also nearly half of the original or half of the size that's in the current permit. So the change in emissions for those that we're seeing for like nitrogen oxides, it's like point five two pounds per hour, which is quite a bit of a reduction as well, kind of similar to those particulate matter ones. For the carbon monoxide, we've got a reduction of point four one pounds per hour. And then for greenhouse gases, for that one, we've got a reduction of like 9,488 tons per year. And then I guess I forgot to mention for the auxiliary boiler, it's a reduction of 49,750 ton per year of those greenhouse gases, which is even more because of the size being so different.
Yeah, thanks for talking us through that, Nick. And I know this person who just asked a question because they're calling in on the phone. But again, we're happy to share this information if needed. And some of the, the things that might be good for folks if they want more information is Caitlin did just share the draft permit conditions in the chat, the actual permit conditions. Caitlin, if you're able to finals, those might also be good so that people can kind of do a comparison. I think that we've linked to that document in some of our, like, the, the project summary that was kind of that high level overview of what is the project is asking for. But some of that kind of side-by-side comparison, I mean, the thing to take away from this is the actual size of the equipment that the company installed is about half the size of what they originally asked for. And all of that original equipment passed all of the evaluation that our permit section and the permits team did. So when you're looking at state and federal regulations, even at that larger size, they pass. So we're always happy to see these emissions reductions. And I know they sound kind of like weird numbers when you're thinking about that. But it is a significant reduction in emissions that they'll be actually having as to what they were originally going to be allowed to do. So it, it is a positive change. And we don't often have permits that come in for such large reductions like that. So, and again, they never emitted up to those higher levels. So that's something to consider because they never installed those larger pieces of equipment. They had only installed these smaller ones. So all right, it looks like Caitlin was able to help us. Right, it was so little time for questions. If folks, any other ones? Appreciate the questions. It's really helpful. I think it, it helps us give a little bit more attention to folks and make sure that people are understanding what we're talking about. I'm going to go back to our panelist page just to, sorry if this makes everybody dizzy, kind of clicking back and forth through that presentation. Apologize for that. All right, and I know I, I might be cutting out a little bit. Thanks for that. One of my staff let me know that being out a little bit is storming here, so apologize for that. I know Caitlin's ready to save the day if needed here too. So hopefully you guys won't lose me as well. All right. Just another minute here to see if there's any other questions. All right, hold on one second, and I should be able to, all right, you should be able to speak again if you have another question. Go right ahead. So phone number nine, two, three, four. I just unmuted you. If you had another question, you can go ahead and ask.
Yes, I do. When a pollutant is too high, how long does Indeck have to get it back below the limit?
Okay, so you're really quiet, so I'm going to repeat the question and hopefully I have it right. The question was if Indeck violates an emission limit, a permit condition that's an emission limit, how long do they have to come back into compliance? Is that, was that the question?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so Rachel, I know you talked a little bit about the enforcement, not the enforcement process per se, but the process of writing a violation notice, issuing a violation notice. But can you talk a little bit about how that works as far as, you know, we write the violation notice, how long the company has to respond, what they, what we require them to do, and that kind of a thing?
Yeah, so besides regular emissions reporting, their indeck is required to notify me in writing for any excess emissions over, that occur for more than an hour over a permit limit. So at that point, we can issue a violation notice. But in their written notification, they have to tell us why it happened. They have to tell us, you know, what happened. They have to explain what they're doing, what they did to fix it. And they have to tell us what they are going to do to make sure that it doesn't happen again. So that's, that's in the written notification that they give us. The violation notice itself, they have to respond to within 20 weeks. And again, after reiterate that same information so that we know that they are addressing the issue. And then after, after that, I, I stay on them. And I, you know, verified that they are actually doing the things that they said they were going to do. And we made sure that they are back in compliance. If at that point, they are still not in compliance, we have the ability to issue a second violation notice. And then they go into an enforcement situation. So there's definitely an escalation there. But I just kind of want to reassure you that that is, it's a dynamic process. And it is something that we take very seriously. That's what happens with a violation notice. Indeck, you know, besides the regular emissions reporting, or besides the reporting for their emissions that I would do during a normal inspection, they also have to report their emissions to our state emissions reporting system. And then on top of that, they have to submit reports to me on a quarterly basis. So that's every three months. They are submitting reports to me that do include emissions calculations. So in general, I have at least five different times throughout the year that I'm reviewing their emissions. And then, you know, even more if I do an inspection that year. So it's, it's constant reporting to us. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, thanks for laying that out. I know it is, we definitely have a lot of oversight over this type of facility. So it's good to know how many times they have to report to you. And the fact that they have to report within, you know, if they had even an hour over any is really important to know as well. So appreciate that. Okay, just making sure we don't have any other questions here. Give folks just another minute or so.
I guess I'll, I'll also just kind of offer here that at any point, at any point in time, I could call indeck and request reports, anything that is required under their permit. So as far as, you know, kind of unannounced emissions verification, it's written into the permit condition that they need to be able to supply records upon request of the department. So we, we could do that at any time.
Yeah, that's a good point. All right, well, panelists, thank you so much for participating tonight. I appreciate everybody's willingness to answer questions. If you guys want to, you can go ahead and turn your cameras off. And that if you want to turn your camera on, we'll shift over to the hearing portion of the night. All right. Okay, so we're going to shift over to the hearing portion. So we're, just as a reminder, this is the time when we won't be able to give you feedback. So sometimes when people make comments, they actually will ask questions on the comment. That's totally fine to do that. We just won't be able to respond to you right now. So wanted to make sure I reiterated that. There is an opening statement that I have to read just to officially start the comment period. So I'm going to go ahead and read that. And once I'm finished with that, I will call the names of anybody who indicates they would like to make a comment. All right. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon. I am with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, and I will be the hearing officer tonight. Annette Switzer, Air Quality Division Director, is the decision maker for this permit application. She'll be listening to your comments this evening. She'll be considering all comments prior to making a decision. This hearing is related to a request from Indeck Niles LLC, located at 2200 Progressive in Niles, Michigan. The company has requested changes to their existing air permit number seven, five, dash, one, six, B, as in boy. These changes include a decrease in the capacity of the auxiliary boiler from 182 million BTUs per hour to 85 million BTUs per hour, a decrease in the capacity of the fuel heaters from 13.5 million BTUs per hour to 8.5 million BTUs per hour for each unit, and then a change in the brake horsepower of the emergency engine. So the Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is Part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can make the requested changes, they must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health-based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include emission limits. In specific ways, the operation of the, they will be operating the equipment to ensure those standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed permit an opportunity to provide information we are able to use in deciding whether to approve the permit or if there are additional issues to consider. So please note the proposed permit is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be granted at all. Please recognize the department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria we are able to use in making a decision. So for example, concerns related to local zoning truck traffic and noise are not within our authority. Some of you might want to simply express your support or opposition of the proposed project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. The hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on the proposed project. The public comment period for this proposed permit began on July 27th, and it will end at midnight on September 11th, 2023. Additional comments or information may be submitted through that time via written or verbal comment during this hearing, by email or by voicemail. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the permit application will be made by the decision maker. The decision can deny a permit, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision, and if applicable, the approved permit. As stated previously, you may submit a written comment at any time during the comment period by US post or email, or you may call in a comment to the public comment voicemail. You may also type the word comment into the question box and submit your comment there. I will read aloud all comments you submit via the question box unless you state do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand, and I'll unmute your line so you can speak. We will limit your comment time to about three minutes. And I usually give over that. And if you're speaking, I will let you know when you have about 30 seconds left. I will do my best to address commenters in the order your hands are raised, but please bear with us as the technology does have challenges with doing that. So please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. Thank you so much for your attention, and now I will begin calling the names of anyone who would like to make a comment. All right, so just as a reminder, before we get into actually making the comments, use that raise hand icon if you'd like. Feel free to type a comment into your question and answer box, and I'll read it out loud for everyone to hear. Unless you don't want me to read it, then just put do not read. Or if you are on the phone, I know we have one person on the phone, and they are, I know they know how to raise their hand. So if you would like to make a comment verbally, just do that pound two again on your phone, and I'll be able to see that you have your hand raised. So again, as we talked about earlier, you don't have to make a comment tonight if you're not ready. If you're just still in information gathering stages, we have until September 11th to submit those comments. And we will go over how you can submit comments in other ways once the official hearing is done. So I'll give you a couple of minutes here to decide if you want to make a comment or not. And then I'll call anyone's name. Who does? All right, well, Annette, I'm not seeing any comments at this time. Are you okay with me closing the hearing for tonight?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So in order to close the hearing, I do have to read just a short closing statement. I promise it's not nearly as long as the opening statement. And then we can talk about a couple of other things before we let you guys go for tonight. So, "Thank you so much for taking the time to participate in the meeting tonight. We really do appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on September 11th, 2023. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit." The hearing is now closed, so thank you so much. All right, let's get back to a couple of other things here. I know I had mentioned before that you do not have to make a comment tonight. We try to provide a bunch of different ways that you can make a comment. Not everybody feels comfortable speaking aloud to people they don't know. So you can always send us a letter to our permit section manager at Eagle, and that's the Air Quality Division, and it's P O Box 30260, and it's Lansing, Michigan 48909. Another way we get a lot of comments is in through our public comment email. So if you Uh, another way we get a lot of comments is in through our public comment email. So if you, you want to do that, you can type the email to eagle dash A Q D dash P T I, public comments. And P T I, public comments, uh, is all one word, and that's at Michigan, all spelled out, dot gov is in government. Or one of the easiest ways to give us a comment is just give us a call and leave your comment on our public comment voicemail. That number is five, one, seven, two, eight, four, zero, nine, zero, zero. So we house all of our information at the website that's on the screen, and I'll just read that out loud because I know we have, um, someone on the phone here. So it's Michigan dot gov, so Michigan all spelled out, and then it's the forward slash, and then Eagle, E G L E, air public notice, and Eagle Air Public Notice is all one word. So anytime you are looking for either information about Indec when we're having a public comment period for that, or any other facility that might be open for comment, we also put our rules, enforcement notices, and anything really that's open for comment, we put on that page. Um, so on that page, if you go there and you look under permits and you looked, look at open for comment, you're gonna find the other information associated with this Indec proposed permit. So that's the proposed project summary. That's just that high level overview of what is being requested. A lot about our evaluation, um, some information about air monitoring and, and some things like that, just very high level. The technical fact sheet is more of a deep dive into the whole evaluation that our permit staff did to look at this proposed project and make sure that it would meet those state and federal regulations, including those health-based screening levels that we talked about earlier. We'll also post the, uh, oh, and the proposed permit terms and conditions. Let's not forget about those. I know Caitlin shared those in the chat. Um, and then you'll also find links to the meeting recording. So we also post them on that website, and we post them on our YouTube channel at Michigan Eagle. You can find this, um, meeting and any past meetings that you'd like. So like Caitlin mentioned earlier, we will be posting this recording. We'll share it with you. We'll share with you a copy of the slides if you provided an email. Um, I'm gonna go right to the contact information page here, and I'm just gonna give out Nick's phone number and email address. Um, if you have questions up from any, any of us, um, if you have things that you, um, want to chat with them about, or if you are the person who called in tonight and you need more information, you can go ahead and get ahold of Nick. And if he can't answer your questions, he will be happy to pass it over to anybody else on our staff to make sure that we get you the answers that you need. So Nick's email address is Carlson with a C. So C A R L S O N, N as in Nick, and then the number one, and it's at Michigan dot gov. And his phone number is five, one, seven, five, eight, two, five, one, six, zero. So like I said, get ahold of Nick. If he can't answer the questions for you, he'll make sure one of us, uh, will get back with you for sure. So again, we really appreciate you coming out tonight. I know the weather down there sounds like it was a little bit, maybe a little bit frightful. It's moving through here right now. Um, so I hope everybody stays safe, and I hope you have a really good rest of your evening. And again, thank you so much for participating with us tonight. So Caitlin, whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and end the meeting.